I don't think Lorraine O'Neal from Marshall County. Lorraine, Elaine, Lorraine, Lorraine Dillon? Yo. Why don't you guys want to? I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, we should. Mother, Mrs. Colone, I don't know the name of her. We don't have Lorraine, right, but it's all just. Obviously, at 12 o'clock. Yeah, 12 o'clock. You need to rent the car for safe. It's eight fifty-nine now. What's that, son? I'm quick with glasses. So, no. So, now, should I go up there? Could've made, could've made. Nope, it's not. Sixteen, oh, no, it was a sixteen. I don't know. Will you rock me up, would you do? Absolutely. Okay, I don't see my person, the times up, like, any shoes. I've never been to that. Ready?
I'm gonna call this meeting to order over the North Andover School Committee for September, uh, September. I'm thinking too much. January sixteenth, twenty twenty, our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you wouldn't mind just standing for one second, we've got a quick moment of silence. Dr. Gilligan?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, just a quick moment of silence in recognition of a tragic loss in our community, school community, this past week among what several students in the district, and just tragic, and our thoughts and prayers are with the family.
Thank you. Okay, we're back in session. Our first order of business is public comment. We have a public comment at the beginning and the end of our meeting, so if you wanna wait to the end, that's fine, too, but if you wanna say something now, feel free. If you are, please come, stay at the microphone, and please state your name for the record, Ms. Janice.
Hi, I'm Janice Phillips, and I live at three fifty-five Osgood Street. I've had two kids in the schools for almost twelve years, and I really, really dislike public speaking. I've, in fact, so much that this is the first time I've ever done it, so please bear with me, and obviously, I feel like this is a worthwhile discussion to have, so I'm gonna give it a go. So, good evening to everyone. Thank you all for your commitment to our children. I have two kids, a tenth grader and a sixth grader, who are navigating their way through our public school system. Your dedication and collaboration is the key to success in our schools. I've had the privilege of being a parent for ten years, a PTO member, and a substitute teacher at Atkinson School. When the budget status was released in December, I was shocked to see the disparity in per pupil spending between the elementary schools. There is approximately a twenty percent disparity between Kittredge School and Atkinson School. Going back to two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen budget, the deficit has always been approximately two thousand dollars per pupil. According to the D- the DESI data, Atkinson School has the highest needs population, with over forty-five percent of the students falling into this category. The next closest school has approximately forty-one percent high-needs students and operates at over thirteen hundred dollars more per student. There was over a three percent increase in the number of high-needs students at Atkinson since the seventeen eighteen fiscal year, and I suspect we will see a jump again this year. In looking at MCAS scores, a direct measure of student learning, Atkinson School stands furthest below the district average score. That brings us here with a whole host of questions, and because I understand that you won't have answers to these questions tonight, I'll leave you with a copy and respectfully request that your response prior to the next discussion about the budget. So, to start, why does the school with the highest percentage of high-needs students, the lowest MCAS scores, and very large class sizes operate with at least, with the least per pupil spending in the district? What can be done to increase the amount of money spent on instructional support? Middle school is where this disparity becomes glaring. My own experience and that of others I have spoken with confirms this. The average middle-of-the-road student at Atkinson are suffering. They are not starting middle school equal to their peers. If my child had additional instructional support in his classroom, that focused attention would make a world of difference. I cringe when I hear people say, "When kids get to middle school, you can tell which elementary school they came from by the quality of their work." I want to be clear, I do not see this as a reflection of the amazing faculty and staff at Atkinson. It is a direct result of a lack of appropriate resources for the school population. To drill down further, we would like to see middle school MCAS scores aggregated for each of the origin elementary schools. In comparing budgets between schools, the categories reported by each school were not consistent. To alleviate this confusion for us, we're asking that you point us to a copy of a fully itemized budget for each school. In addition, please show us the parts of the budget that account for the disparity in spending. Ostensibly, needs can change from year to year. We'd like to understand what checks are in place to ensure the district plan is adjusting to the error-changing needs of the student population. Can you please explain the process for collecting information from staff and parents in order to determine which needs are most urgent in a school? I reached out to my Atkinson connections, I've spent a lot of time there, and to ask what they felt was most urgent, and I collected information from twelve people. Unequivocally, the top four requests were more ELL services, a full-time aide in each classroom, recruiting as many bilingual aides as possible, or more reading and math intervention by trained providers, and additional social emotional support staff. Other mentions included redistricting to more fairly distribute the need, and an additional assistant principal for behavioral support. Atkinson educates a transient population and receives a lot of new admissions after the start of the school year. What are the new student numbers for each elementary school this year, and how are these students included in the budget? The population jump at Atkinson happens each year, does the budget anticipate this and account for it? Do you look for schools with smaller class sizes when deciding where students should be placed upon enrollment? What is the ratio of students to full-time licensed certified classroom teachers excluding paraprofessionals and those who hold other professional licenses in each elementary school? It's exciting to see that the pending budget, that pending the budget outcome, there could be an additional administrator at Atkinson. How will this halftime administrator work? In the past, other schools have used a current teacher in this capacity. If this is the case at Atkinson, what is the plan to ensure there is not a negative impact on the students in that classroom? As you move forward with the budget, I'd urge you to lessen the per pupil gap and pour more resources into instruction, where it can impact the most kids, especially the average kid who is slipping through the cracks. In our town, our students should receive a North Andover education, not an Atkinson, Franklin, Kittredge, Thompson, or Sargent education. Now is the time for us to work together to make it happen.
Thank you so much, Janice. That was very good for the first time.
Janice, outstanding.
Yeah. I, hold on, Greg, hold on a second. So, I assume you've copied that? Please, leave them. I really appreciate you coming down and really focusing on the Atkinson. As you probably know, the superintendent's recommended budget for next year really focuses heavily on getting more resources to Atkinson, and we definitely see that as a need. I will just say, you know, honestly, I'm not going to, I don't think this committee is going to play elementary school off elementary school. I know some people on the town side would look, play department off against department, but this committee is gonna give the resources to every single school in an equal matter. And the issues that you brought up, there could be some answers for them. I think that we'll get them back to you by our next meeting on February, February sixth. So, thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, if there's any questions, like, last year, we took questions to Bev Zagari, and then we posted answers, and, you know, we may be able to answer some things tonight, too, because.
I imagine that will happen. Thank you.
Nice job, Janice, thank you very much. We did not ask her to do that, by the way. That was not a plant. Might've been a plant by somebody else, but it wasn't our plant. Okay, any other public comment right now? No. Okay, recognition, North Andover PD Crossing Guard Dan Hagan. Is that the?
Yep, sure, one of you, what's the?
We have from the police department to say a few words, so.
Why don't you come up and say a few words, or then we'll do, Greg likes to do a photo right after that, so just say a couple of words and use the microphone, please, if you don't mind. Yeah, just have a quick seat or stand up, whatever you wanna do, but I can hear you fine, the people at home will be able to hear you fine, so please use the microphone.
So, my name's Katie, I'm a community service officer, I've been a community service officer for almost two years in North Andover. Dan is one of our trusty crossing guards, you guys probably see him a lot by the middle school, at the big intersection. So, AAA hands out an award every year, they actually reach out to the chief of police to nominate somebody in the community that works for the town or volunteers for the town to recognize them for their help and assistance with traffic safety or making the town a safer place for kids in the community. So, the chief actually called me up to his office with one of the lieutenants, and they asked if we should nominate Dan, and we all agreed that it would be an excellent idea. We appreciate our crossing guards very, very much, especially in the times like today where it's very, very cold outside, and there still are kids that cross going to school. Dan has been over seventeen years?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years here. I've only had the pleasure of knowing him for almost two, but the almost two years that I've been here, I think I've had to find coverage for him twice, one 'cause he was sick and one 'cause he was getting the award.
Yep.
So, Dan, a lot of people know who you are, he dresses up like Santa Claus around Christmas time, everybody appreciates him, and even people who are crossed by him in the morning when they were kids are bringing their kids across right now and still seeing him there, too.
That's, you know, that's a big, you know, no, no, only through Katie and, you know, Chief Gray, but it's just, it's a pleasure to work, you know, for the tournament, I mean, excuse me. I used to work for the tournament doing, doing what I'm doing now, okay, that didn't pan out, so. Sue took me, Sue Northman took me under her wings, and she was really my, my coach, and she actually told me the do's and don'ts, and if you did do something wrong, she'd, you know, she'd, she'd get right on your case.
We all know Susie, she definitely do.
Yeah, she, you know, you couldn't get past Susie. Get on the good side of it, you're golden, you get on the devil's side, watch out. But she, she hired me, and, of course, I came over three, four times to interviews, and a lot of stuff that Sue went through the interview with, I didn't have this choice in the tournament, you know, they train you, you know, they get out there, and they wanted you, like, in five minutes from one end of town to the other end of town, no rest, no stop sign, so you had to get out there with your body and just, you know.
Well, I'm bored.
You know, a lot of, but it's, it's just a pleasure being a crossing guard for eighteen years, and especially with Katie and the rest of the crew, you know, down at the station, you know, it's, I feel, I feel at home here, and everybody's treating me wonderful, so I get no, there were no backbone to say anything bad, you know, and, you know, just like the kids, because even the kids, if I'm out for, say, a couple of days, two, three days or shorter, they'll come up and they'll say, you know, "Where you been?" Even the parents will come up to me and they'll say, you know, "My son or daughter, they missed you, they're worried about you," you know, and the parents also, they, you know, they, they put their trust in me, you know, getting into, you know, crossing the street. In this corner here, like Katie said, is one of the, you know.
It's a tough one, I spent a lot of time in that corner with the last speaker. Holding political signs last year for one of our, one of our local candidates, so I saw you in action, I really appreciate it, I think this whole school committee does, so let's give a round of applause for Dan.
Yeah, so, Dan, on behalf of the North Andover School Committee.
Here we go. Do that there.
Oh, sure. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
You even helped me cross quite a bit.
That's it, you know, but really didn't want, you know, really not looking for anything, I just wanna, you know, do my best, and, you know, as long as Katie gives me approval for everything, and I'm satisfied to her, you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Here, here.
You're welcome.
You're the crossing guard at Maine and Pool One Twenty-Five. Next word. Is there consent agenda, approval of minutes, the minutes from January ninth, twenty twenty?
So, I'll move to approve of minutes from the January ninth, two thousand twenty meeting as presented in the packet.
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Ms. Mably. Any further discussion, edits, concerns? Here, none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no one, five oh vote, thank you very. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, you were in Sin City. That's right.
I was in the desert.
In the desert. I'll leave it at that. Okay, student report, I don't see Jack, but I see Aiman and Micah, come on up.
So, first thing I have for tonight is Relay for Life, which is an event the high school does every year to raise money for cancer research, is collaborating with student council, and they're attempting to raise two thousand dollars by the end of January, and something to, I guess, motivate students is our student council advisor agreed to shave his head if that goal is reached by Janu- January thirty-first. And kind of along with that, at the end of January, student council is adding on to their initiative of Knights Care, which is showing how the North Andover High School community impacts so many people and all the different things that it values, and each day of that week will be focused on a different aspect of the school. I know one of the days is the environment, one of the days is extracurriculars, one of the days is athletics and the music department, and it's just gonna show what our school has to offer and give a little bit of the spotlight to each aspect of it. In addition, National Honor Society is having another blood drive. I believe it is at the high school, not entirely sure when, but I believe it's towards the end of January, and that is what is a very good fundraiser that we do yearly.
And on the theme of service, the Interact Club, which is an organization which gives back to the community, held a bake sale recently in order to raise money for what are known as KIVA microloans, where the money that is raised is given to somebody who is in need of a small loan in order to support a business or support their family somewhere in sub-Saharan Africa, and so I believe a hundred and fifty dollars was raised from this last sale, and all those proceeds will be going to a good cause. Now, you know me, so it's sports time. So, I'm just gonna give you the, the brief summary of where the teams, the most popular teams are at this point. So, currently, the boys varsity basketball team has a grand total of one win. We will be hoping for another win tomorrow night, but we'll see how that game goes. But as the season's gone on, they've gotten better. The girls varsity basketball is doing significantly better with a six-and-four record, and the boys hockey team currently has a seven-and-three record. And in addition, Sunday is the first of these state championship level meets, or competitions for all sports teams, and it's the track team's state relay meet, so if they win, you can look forward to seeing another of the black banners put up in the gym, so hopefully they will. And that's really all we have, because not much has happened in the last week.
Thank you. Any questions for our students?
Nothing. Great, well, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, next word of business, our superintendent's report, Dr. Gilligan?
I will save the time for the budget. Okay, some information for that.
Okay, and I am gonna do the same thing, 'cause it's.
Oh, oh, the SEEM collaborative, okay.
That is a.
I thought it was a separate item.
No, they, they, they put under yours, it is a separate thing, but they put under your, um.
All right, great. SEEM collaborative, this is just merely a perfunctory, it's yearly, they have to provide the information to the school committee on how they're doing financially in order to comply with all the regulations of Mass DESE as a collaborative, a special education collaborative that we, a special education collaborative that we belong to. And this is just informational, no vote is needed.
It was on the front page, that's what I was gonna say, so without national, you know.
Oh, I'll have to, I'll have to talk to Director Kathy Lossen, the executive director of SEEM to.
Because we're new members to there.
We're brand-new members, yeah, so we're also, we're still at Crest, and you can belong to more than one collaborative, but I believe we had four students at Crest at one point recent, in the past year, and we had three at SEEM, and they're a really good fit for a lot of reasons, and particularly around professional development, connecting, et cetera.
You may not be on the cover of this one.
The fiscal year that was there when we joined.
Oh, fair enough.
Yeah, yeah, that could be very true. And I spoke with Kathy today, so.
Okay, so, I'm gonna skip the chair's report, too, and we're gonna start our FY twenty-one budget public hearing, just for verification of our audience, by law, we have to hold a public hearing on our school budget every single year. It's kind of a, you know, it's a formality, I wanna make it as less formal as possible, so when people come up and they want to comment on our, the superintendent's recommended budget, give us input, I'm sure Janice probably covered a lot of it already, but that will, that will suffice, and then obviously, if people wanna wait to the end, they can public comment again, so you guys can talk all night long if you want, on our agenda, at least. So, can I have, first have a motion from the members to go in and have a public hearing on the FY twenty-one budget, please?
So, I'll move that the school committee open the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget.
Second. Okay, motion by Ms. McDevitt, seconded by Ms. Lynch to open the public hearing. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, okay, that's a five oh vote. So, now, again, if people wanna come forward and make comments, if we can respond, we will respond right now, if not, kinda like the list of questions we have, we'll get to these and post them as well, and obviously, we'll get them back to you, specifically Janice, it sounds like, I'm sure you got this list with a bunch of folks.
Chair, can I ask one question?
Absolutely, go ahead.
So, the visits to the nurse, the twenty-two forty-nine visits, what were those in nature, most of them?
So, in nature, we have a complete report, and actually, I have a slide, if, would you like us to cover a couple of the?
Well, yeah, maybe in the public conference, I think, you know, we're having the public hearing now, we should crawl this into the public.
We'll get, I'll get that question. I mean, maybe that question's gonna be asked by, up there, and then we can pop it up there, but I want, I don't wanna waste their time, I want people to come up and, feel free, Brendan, come on up, we're on a first-hand basis here at the school committee. You gonna coach again next year?
Yes.
Okay, great.
My name's Brendan, I have three kids at Atkinson, and talking to some of the other parents. You know, David, you just said, at the end of, when Janice talked, you said, "We don't pitch school against school," then why is there such a big discrepancy between Atkinson and the others? You know, you don't have to answer it now, but that's a question that we all have. We all pay the same taxes, that type of thing.
Do you want to just give, maybe a, a, a?
Yeah, so, I think a couple of things, I think that you. Someone brought this up, and it's an excellent question, this is end of the year DESE data, and we have a, I have a bunch of slides, because this was brought up to me earlier in the week, I had a chance to meet with the Atkinson PTO president and someone from the school council, and there's a couple components to it that can really skew how those numbers are, and we have the slides to explain it, but basically, at elementary school, we're really lean operation, I am in complete agreement, that all of our schools need additional support, and there's no doubt about it, we have a, you know, a presentation for tonight, but when you think about it, a couple of the components are this, elementary schools have a principal, and that's it. We've had an elementary school, two elementary schools in the recent years that have had a halftime assistant principal, and the plan is to have one at Atkinson next year, the following year Thompson, and the following year after that Kittredge, because the demands are such, and, you know, we presented that last week in the budget. But you have a principal, you have a guidance counselor, and you have a nurse, and those are the three main people that all schools need. What skews the number is the populations of students at the schools differ. So, somewhere like Kittredge School with two-hundred-and-forty students, based on how many staff are in the building, would, would change that number. More importantly, or not more importantly, equally as important, there's a lot more staffing in some schools, and the DESI just takes a straight, you know, how many staff are in a building, but the, you know, there are significantly good-sized special education programs at all of the elementary schools, and Atkinson has a small one, it's one staff member, but Sargent has the multiple supports program, which deals with students with severe medical challenges, as well as another program. Franklin has the autism, which, if anyone's been to Franklin School, it's an amazing program, and Thompson and Kittredge School both have behavioral therapeutic intervention programs, you know, which add additional staff to the building that go into that number. And simply put, I look at, I think all the schools need additional support, and I am passionate about Atkinson getting the support they need. Last year, we added a position to the budget for Atkinson, which was, which was really helpful, because it brought first grade to seventeen, second grade is at twenty-one, six, seven, thirds at twenty-two, fourths at twenty-two, and fifth's the biggest class they have there, it's at twenty-six. and fifth's the biggest class they have there. It's at 26, 7. So the numbers and how that's impacted is, has to do with how many kids are there because that changes what are there for special education populations. There's nothing extra at those schools as compared. And in fact, Atkinson has, um, they have the only, currently, they have the only EL teacher in the district. And they are about even the same amount of students as Thompson for EL. I just talked to the teacher at Atkinson the other day. So there's only one EL teacher, and that's why we're proposing a model change in North Andover that adds another teacher next year, which gives us two for the district and following the year going on. But they also have, in the district, we need more reading support, and that's in the five-year plan. Atkinson currently receives the most reading support, um, in the district, but they have demand. And I think Janice was really eloquent. I mean, all the needs are different, you know. Thompson and Atkinson, um, you know, based on the numbers you look at, a 45 and 41 or 42 percent economically disadvantaged. Um, Thompson and Atkinson, um, you know, in terms of special education, are, you know, very similar. Thompson's a little bit higher. Uh, EL students, right around the same. So there's a lot of challenges, but all the elementary schools, we're really lean. I mean, it's teachers, it's one principal, it's one guidance counselor, it's one nurse, and it is one halftime assistant principal at both schools, the other two. And it's time Atkinson gets that support, and I believe they need the nurse as well. The other schools have similar amounts of visits, and we can get into it, but I could talk all night about the different supports as part of the plan, so.
I guess my, my second part of this was, you know, I know you said that there's going to be a assistant principal and a nurse added next year. What made you come up with that? You know, a lot of, I, I see a lot of other things go on in this, in the town, and they hire like a, somebody, like an outside person to come in and evaluate of what they actually need. Have you guys ever thought of that? Because, you know, you guys say, "All right, Atkinson needs this and this." But how do you know that they need that besides just looking at numbers? You know, is there, is there a better way to look at, and not just Atkinson, all the schools? You know what? Like, an outside in, to look at all the schools.
Right. I've actually, I heard that, actually, the Selectman Dean College Arrow called me the other night and suggested that as well. So I want to give that some thought, but the bottom line, who knows our schools the best are our principals and our teachers, by far. I'm not going to spend money. I mean, if the town wants to spend money, maybe we can talk about that. But we have very, we have no room to move in our budget. But we recognize we need to do better, and that's why we're proposing a budget that increases, um, from last year 4.52 percent. That's what he recommended. In two weeks, when we recommend our budget, we can add to that. And we may, we may really add to that. I mean, I, I'm taking seriously what Janice said here today. So we're going to look at this, we're going to quantify it, and you could very much see a lot of these things happening next year, so. Thank you, Brendan. I really appreciate you coming today.
I hope so.
And I saw you in the BBJ, by the way. You had your picture in the Boston Business Journal last week.
Did I?
Yeah, I don't know if you saw that, yeah.
No.
Yeah, you're serving at some event. I'm sorry, I'm-
Oh, I know, we, event, you're telling-
Yeah, yeah.
So just to speak to that specifically, um, in developing the five-year plan that we've put forward, that came about as a result of multiple meetings with the principals specifically. And with the idea that while maintaining, um, the unique culture of each school, how do we make sure that each school is getting exactly what it needs and each student is getting a North Andover education? And those words we've heard. That's exactly what the intent was, and that's where this came from, is that, that effort.
Mr. Chair, um, just a point of, um, of process. When somebody comes up to speak at a public hearing, do they need to give their first and last name and address?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Brendan, Brendan-
Brendan LaGro at 35 Bagdoli Drive, North Andover.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we're doing what we need to be doing.
I mean, I, I want to make this less intimidating. We, you have a formal public hearing process, but I, I feel like I know a lot of you guys on a first-hand basis. That's my bad. I saw, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Thank you, Brendan. Um, anyone else like to come forward on the public hearing part? Please state your name for the record.
Um, my name is Pam Petrowski, and I live at 73 Pleasant Street. I have three children in the system. I have a junior, an eighth grader, and a third grader. And my third grader is at Atkinson, and all three of my children have been at Atkinson. And I have to say, I have nothing but wonderful things to say about the staff there. My youngest was a struggling reader and is now a flourished reader and really doing a great job. And that is completely 100% toward, goes towards their teachers. My question is a little bit different, and, um, I'm also a teacher in another district. And I'm wondering about, um, your plan for increasing technology in the classrooms. The district that I'm in, our middle school, uh, through high school, is a one-to-one, um, district. And I know our schools are not. Specifically at the middle school, um, there seems to be a serious lack of technology there. And I think that that's just a hu- huge injustice to our students, especially with the world that we live in. They all have their phones and they can all go on as they need to, but I feel like, um, there are a lot of things that they could be doing that they're not doing. My eighth grader told me the other day that in one of her classes, they were watching a movie, and she says, "Mom, what's it called? The thing that looks like a box and you put it in?" And I was like, "A VCR?" You watched a movie on a VCR? It's 2020. So anyway, nothing wrong with the VCR. I just was like, was that the only way in that classroom to show what needed to be shown? Could she stream something? Like, where is the technology? So that's just my question. Um, what's the plan? I know there was a big discussion at the beginning of the school year at the PTO meeting at Atkinson for trying to get Chromebooks in the classroom and maintaining the Chromebooks. And I know the PTO takes on a huge burden for that, but it's not the PTO's responsibility to put the technology in the classroom. And I did ask the question at that meeting, "What's the district's plan for this?" So that's my question.
Talk a little bit of technology and then I can add a couple.
Yeah, I would say this. I said, uh, if anyone watched last week, I don't know, I heard I couldn't be heard. And I've never been accused of not being able to be heard. But, um, we are very lucky in this town because parents have done an amazing job. And I cited, if it wasn't for the NAAA and NAMA and, uh, individual folks who have donated for foundations and curriculum, and the PTOs, every single classroom in the district, um, they paid for a sh- a short throw projector and a document camera. They have donated Chromebooks, and we've talked quite a bit about the equity of the Chromebooks, because we have had to look at, we don't want anyone getting out of whack. And currently, we are at 1.3 students to device in grades one through eight. And Atkinson had a donation, I think, was it recently this year, September, that brought them down to maybe 1.2-ish students per device. So we've been able to increase this, and a lot of those, that information, a lot of the, um, everything that we've got has been, is the result of a lot of generous, very generous donations. But Mr. Grant also comes forward each year with a plan around re, you know, figuring out the recycling, um, plan or replacement plan for the Chromebooks. And it's a challenge. It's also been a lot of money we've spent on the infrastructure and the network, and it's increased, and I still, today, it was a little bit slow for me. So, um, there are challenges and, but at the same time, we've, it wasn't long ago, we couldn't even cobble together 25 computers for one school together. And now we've been able to get these devices, so it continues to be a work in progress, but it's the best ratios we've ever had, one through eight.
And I know that there's like, I know that the funding comes from DESI and all things are different, and different districts have different amounts of money allotted for different things. But I know that like Methuen and Haverhill are towns that are one-to-one, and we're in North Andover, we should also have those things. And I know that it's, you, you get what you get from DESI. I just, I'm wondering if, if there is a plan going forward, that's all.
Well, just regarding the, the one-to-one, a few years ago, we had made that our goal, but then just monitoring usage, and Mike Grant does a very good job of this. We went with the cart model where we have the cars that have 25 to 30. And he monitors the usage, and it's not like any cart is 100%. They're getting used, they're getting heavily used, but it's not like anyone that needs a Chromebook at any time doesn't have one available at the schools.
Right, but there's a huge, there's a big difference in planning, even for the teachers. If you know you have a Chromebook every day, you can plan a whole lot differently and more effectively than if you have a Chromebook maybe this day, and then you have to figure out who's got it this day and this day and this day. So it just, there's a, yes, there's more, but it, the, it could be more streamlined. That's all.
No, for now, I just want to make, you, you mentioned, you know, the PTO is doing a lot. The whole model classrooms in all our, in all our facilities, that was funded completely by the PTO. And that's, that's shame on, shame on this town for making, making the PTOs do that. So I couldn't agree with you more.
I mean, I'm so grateful, and I've, I've been part of the PTO, and I think it's wonderful, but it, maybe we've relied on the PTO a little bit too much because it's been there. I mean, you know, we're lucky, but-
The PTO, they do a great job-
They do.
Part of my PTO, and every PTO does a fantastic job. The, the money they raise, you know, should be used for extracurriculars and field trips and stuff like that.
Yes.
Uh, the funding of technology is, is a, is a big issue, and we're taking a look at it again. So thank you very much. I appreciate your comments. Oh, we have an age requirement. I don't know if that's going to work. There, there's an age requirement here. Come and sit. I'm Tom Duggan. I live at 48 Beacon Hill Boulevard.
Charlie Duggan.
Yeah, S O S.
Thank you tonight, um, Charlie. I have two children in the school system. Charlie's at Brad Street, and my other son, Henry, is at Kittredge. And I just wanted to say thank you to the, um, the, the board, and in particular, Jim and Dr. Gilligan for all the thoughtful work you've done in putting this budget together. But I'm left as a parent and a resident feeling that it's, it's not enough, right? And, and that's not on you as the board, um, but how are we going to support our children going forward? And look at things that are very important in the, in the, um, the strategic plan for the schools, modernizing the curriculum, making sure that we're not falling behind in the education that we give so that Charlie and Henry and all the other kids in town have a chance to thrive and, and succeed in life, right? So especially in the elementary schools and, and those critical years of, of early education and early development. So my question tonight, um, is more than it's okay offline, but one of the things that is very helpful in the PowerPoint you did and, and things like that was referencing the budget back to outcomes, right? And so what does it mean to me as a parent at Kittredge? What does it mean to me as a parent at, um, Brad Street? Does it mean better technology? Does it mean smaller classroom sizes? And I also, too, don't want to play the game of, of balancing schools against each other, right? I think we should strive that every student, no matter where you go, you know, the educational experience should be the same. If, you know, you move the line five feet, I'm in Atkinson, right, versus being in Kittredge. And so Henry or Charlie should have the same experience at any school in town, no matter where you live. And I think that's really important for us to do. So one thing I would ask is, as a board and as you think about, um, the budget and the budget presentations, help us as parents understand what those numbers mean in terms of the outcomes, right? So will that mean more teachers at Kittredge for my two boys, or one boy, but soon to be another boy there? Will it mean, you know, more extracurriculars? To your point, David, will it take the pressure off the PTOs so that core things like infrastructure around, um, IT will be funded by the town and by our tax dollars, right? Because this shouldn't be a conversation of town versus schools, right? This is North Andover. We all pay taxes into the general fund, and the town's budget should be a statement of our common priorities and goals. And I think one of our goals should be schools. So my question to you tonight is, however you can help us, I guess, humanize the budget is, is my request so that when we're out there talking to fellow parents and teachers and going to PTO meetings and things like that, we can, you know, explain it a little bit better. Because that's my one thing, is when I look at the budget and to maybe Janice's point, too, breaking down the budgets school by school, um, it's a little bit hard to ascertain what does it mean for like Kittredge, right? What does it mean in terms of supporting the wonderful teachers and the, the librarians and, and nurses? Are we going to get new books? Are there going to be Chromebooks, additional Chromebooks in our school? Different things like that, so. But thank you, everyone, for your efforts. And, and also help us, educate us on the next steps to, in terms of this budget goes into being coming part of the town budget and the process with the Board of Selectmen and other parties in town about how we can make the voices heard to make sure that, um, education funding really becomes a priority for the community. And people understand if there's trade-offs that need to be made, what those trade-offs look like.
Thanks, thank you, Tom. No, you sure?
No, nothing.
Okay. You sure? All right.
I appreciate your remarks.
The part about humanizing, um, what we're trying to do here, so, um, just for FY, the, the next step, you asked what the next steps are. We are going to, um, have this budget for another two weeks, uh, three weeks, actually. February 6th, we'll be giving our final, uh, version to it, and then the, the FinCom, which we have a member or two in the audience, will take a crack at it. And they'll eventually make a recommendation, obviously, to, um, to town meeting, so. Next, anyone else want to come forth and, um, Jennifer, you'll state your name for the record, please.
Hi, um, my name is Jen Fresson, uh, 35, excuse me, 35 Hawthorne Place. So I am the mom of a first grader at Atkinson. She's obviously one of the kids who's benefiting from the teacher that you guys added, so we are enjoying a 17, 18 kid classroom right now. Sort of bracing myself for next year when it's going to go up probably about 30 percent, or possibility it could, since, you know, there's less teachers next year. So listening to Janice talk, she had mentioned a sort of anecdotal chatter about how you can tell the difference, you know, where the kids went to elementary school when they get to middle school. And I have to say, you know, I'm a new parent to the system, so I don't have a super ton of mom friends yet, but I have to say that I've heard, what I have heard, sounds, sounds the same. I've, I've heard from parents who have kids older than mine who have made that transition. And so, um, I know that's all anecdotal, and so I will be really interested to hear, um, you know, if there's a way that we can see how they track as they go forward, if we can compare the elementary school, um, kids as they go forward and compare how they're doing once they leave. And I'm also going to be listening for, in the budget, I'm looking forward to your answers on how we're going to improve, um, instruction. Because clearly, we're looking at the performance of the kids going down, or actually, while they're at Atkinson, not, not performing as well as the others in terms of testing and stuff. That is something that clearly, obviously, needs to be addressed. And one other thing I just wanted to throw in there is, um, I know that, you know, we do depend a lot on the PTOs to raise, raise money. And, um, clearly, Atkinson PTO has done an amazing job. We're enjoying that amazing playground. My daughter loves it. But given that we've recognized that there is a big economic disparity between our elementary schools and that Atkinson is one of the ones where there is a lot more financial struggle at home. We have like one-third of the kids have a single-parent home. Is that accounted for in the expectation of what the PTOs are, are expected to raise? Like, are you taking that into account and not just treating it as if they're all the same? Because they're definitely not. So I really appreciate you giving me the chance to talk, and I'm looking forward to hearing from you.
Anyone else right now? Kim, please state your name.
Hurst. Kim Hurst, Sherwood Drive, 60 Sherwood Drive. I read the 10-page executive summary. Nice. Does anybody think that was fun? It was 10 pages? And I, I'm the choir. I, I guess I was dismayed when I reckon, when I recognized that a few years ago, we were spending in the 94th percentile per pupil, and now we're down to the 97th percentile. So we're, we're losing ground. And I hope that the town manager, and I know you guys are back there, uh, can look at that and say, "What kind of North Andover do we want to be?" I don't want to be in the bottom. I really, and I, I just want to close that gap a little and, and bring that out to people because that might help us get more done. And I would say that I know that there's something political about saying 4.252 percent. It does sound like a lot. But that, is that, that's the best we're going to get? Maybe we try to, you know, move it up to 6% or something so that we, you know, it's kind of a political thing, or not a political thing, but a, what do we really need? Do we really need 6%? Do we really need 7%? Do we really have $22 million that has been saved over the years that maybe we can start looking at? That's all. I'm a sergeant parent, um, and a high school parent and a middle school parent. And we've had a great outcome with this school district, but I know we can do better.
Thank you. Couldn't agree more that we can definitely do better, and, you know, you're right. I mean, we could probably, you know, easily spend another, you know, 10, 20 million dollars. We're trying to be responsible about it, and that's why, you know, the superintendent and his team have put together a five-year plan to start raising the number. It's going to take some time. I, I, I wrote recently, you know, we didn't get this hole overnight. We're not going to get out of it tomorrow, so, um, it's, everything you said is resonating with everyone on this board, I assure you of that. Yes?
My name is Stephanie Hurst. I live at 56 Elm Street. I have three kids. I have a second grader at Atkinson, a first grader at Atkinson, and then my daughter will be a kindergartner at Brad Street next year. So I learned sort of two things this week about looking at the budget. One was that I guess I didn't quite realize how badly we were doing compared to other towns in per pupil spending. And the other was sort of the, um, the thing about that when kids get to middle school, that teachers can tell sort of where they- of where they come from in terms of elementary school. And I had just sort of thought, okay, my kids are at Atkinson. Like, the teachers have been wonderful. The administration has been great. You know, they're all supposed to meet the same standards. And then I kept thinking back to my second grader, as far as I can tell, is doing fine. But his teacher said to me at the conference without my prompting, if you think I'm gonna push him this year and really challenge him, it's not gonna happen. And so I think my concern is that there's so much on the teachers in dealing with all of the other issues that they have to deal with, that if they can't challenge my second grader, where is he gonna be come middle school? So I just think we need to look at funding and we need to look at support for teachers. And I'm not a teacher, so I can't answer what they need, but I think we really need to take a strong look at that. So it's not a question. It was more just a comment. But, yeah.
Comments, questions? So thank you very much. Appreciate your time tonight.
Hi, Alyssa Goldberg, forty-one Hawthorne Place. Just wanted to give my input as far as what I have seen. My daughter is a seventh grader at the middle school. I have twins in fifth grade at Atkinson. My daughter was fort, my oldest was fortunate enough to experience a fifth grade with four teachers at Atkinson. She had a class of just over twenty, I think it was. She had Regina stepped in and did some extra math. She was pulled for that. She had a great experience with that and then was able to go back into her classroom and help her fellow students with some math skills. Because the teacher was able to focus on all of the kids because the class size was so small. My twins are in a class now of twenty-six kids. They're in class together this year. Twenty-six kids, which is actually down from twenty-eight the beginning of the year. I'm seeing a big difference in what they're learning this year, where they are at in January as opposed to where Sydney had been in January. She was so advanced. I could see, okay, great. She's ready for middle school. I didn't think she would be in September, but you can see that growth. I don't see a lot of growth with my twins. I'm nervous. They're average students. They're starting to fall behind. My math lover is struggling. She's not getting the time that she needs from the teacher because they actually have not just the big class size, but they also have behavioral issues. And I've seen that when I volunteered at library. And we are talking about it. I've talked about it with the librarian, with the principal, with Mrs. Connolly, who's the guidance counselor there. And so I've seen where it takes just the librarian so long to get through a lesson and then, oh, okay, you've got ten minutes to do this because the bell's gonna ring. So if the teacher is struggling with behavioral issues, the other students that just need a little bit of time and quiet to learn a lesson, they're not getting that. And so my average or above-average students are now becoming, they need some help. I need tutors in math. I feel like I'm getting to the point where I need to prep them for sixth grade. They're not gonna be ready. And I think that the class size really, it's a big difference. You don't think it has that, but now that I've experienced that, it's amazing. It is amazing. Sydney had a huge class in fourth grade and that's why they added that fifth grade teacher, that extra teacher. And what a year she had. She had a horrible fourth grade year. She had an amazing fifth grade year and was prepped for the middle school. I don't see my twins being ready for middle school. And it's nerve-wracking. And I don't know. I mean, these changes are great and I'm all for them. I want them to happen. I wanna look to the future for those kids, because no one's been doing it for us. And my kids might not, they won't experience it in Atkinson. Hopefully they'll see some changes in the middle school and they'll see some changes in the high school. But I just kinda wanted to express my experience because having those kids and seeing the difference just within our family of three kids is huge with that class size.
So maybe we can give you kind of a high-level answer. I mean, I'm looking at some of the numbers. So like, I'm sure this is probably your daughter's class, but in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, you know, fifth grade size at Atkinson was twenty-one point seven?
Yes.
And now it's up to almost twenty-seven?
Yep.
And, you know, that's a function of, you know, a couple of things. Obviously, you know, I see kids moving into two schools.
Oh, right. It's very transient.
I don't know when the last time we redistricted, but that's another whole can of worms to start with.
Well, I think we were initially.
I was, I went to redistrict as a kid myself in this town and I think I came okay, but...
I think that's what mine was. I think initially when we moved into Hawthorne Place, we were supposed to be at Thompson. And when Sydney went to Atkinson, it was that year before that they did the redistrict. And she went to Atkinson as opposed to Thompson. That was many years ago.
And, you know, Jim McGregor, back me up on the hard numbers, but we've reduced class sizes in the last four years dramatically across. We have our guidelines and I think it's K through two, we try to get between eighteen and twenty-two as our guideline. And third to fifth grade is twenty-three to twenty-five kids. Yeah. That's, those are our guidelines. And right now, only fourteen point three percent of our classrooms don't fall within those guidelines. Unfortunately, I'm sorry that yours does, but those are some, those are some circumstances that, you know, we obviously can't control, you know, when kids move to the district. But it's also a function of space.
Well, I was gonna say, Atkinson doesn't even physically have that space to keep giving all the classes for teachers, for classrooms, for the grades. So, thank you and thanks for your work. And I'm looking forward to seeing what's moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And likewise, I mean, I'm just gonna just dovetail what, like Kittredge, for example, there's only basically two classrooms per, so the classroom sizes are always gonna be bigger at Kittredge than a lot of the other schools. So it's a function of space as well, so not just resources. Okay, please, this is great. Anyone else wanna come up? We will have another shot at the end of the meeting as well. And we will obviously have another shot on our next meeting, so. Okay, could I have a motion to close the public hearing on the FY twenty-one budget, please?
Public hearing on the FY twenty-two budget.
Motion made by Mr. McDebit, second by Ms. Lynch. Any discussion amongst the members?
Twenty-twenty-one, sorry.
Let's do that one.
Yeah, sorry. We're in twenty-twenty, sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five-oh vote. Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. We're gonna continue to talk about the budget. And if anything we talk about raises more need for comment, we'll have comment at the end of the meeting as well. We like a lot of comment in our meetings. Okay, old business, continued discussion of the FY twenty-one recommended budget.
Great. I think there's been some great comments here tonight. And I'm not sure how many folks saw the last meeting or heard. But our team here, my team, who's done a tremendous job, including all the principals, the leadership team, all the different folks preparing for this, have prepared just a little bit of an overview recap for tonight and to answer some of the questions that were raised last time and some of them were raised again tonight. And if you don't mind, Mr. Turisi would like to cover that. A few of those right now. I'm sure there'll be more. And we'll have the opportunity to send them into Bev Zagari and then we'll post the answers on the website as well. So. We're gonna link this. We had some, I had some trouble with Google today with printing and changing from a PowerPoint to slides. And I was suffering the buffer, as they call, a wee bit. So, folks, thanks for coming. First and foremost, I wanted to thank my team and all the folks who helped create this budget and a multi-year plan. This was really based on the strategic plan, which we have recently updated with three objectives and eleven initiatives. And this was a result of my whole first-year entry where I think I met with eleven hundred and thirty-six people. And they identified issues that were important to them. And most of them were parents, PTO groups, staff, teachers. It's online. You can see it. But class size was the number one answer for every single person that participated in the entry plan across the district. It didn't matter what community role you played. That was identified as number one. Secondly, this budget was based on the school committee budget directives, you know, in trying to meet those needs. So plainly speaking, we've got operational and capital needs. And certainly, we talked about last year, based on this entry, the need for a multi-year plan. And it's no secret, North Andover is in the bottom three percentile of spending and in apples-to-apples per-pupil expenditures. And it puts us about, you know, three thirteen out of three twenty-three, right around there in schools in the Commonwealth. And I think that we have some challenges ahead. And I wanted to identify them this year. And therefore, you saw a budget recommendation that may have been higher than what the town had recommended as guidelines and recommended of what we could do. But as the superintendent of schools, I have to be able to do what the school committee's asked me to do. And as someone who lives in the community, as someone who knows about what these operational and capital needs are, and as someone who's worked here in a long time in a variety of roles, I wanted to identify them. So the multi-year plan really is based also, this budget's based on assumptions. It's no frills. We've added a ton of new curriculum over the last couple of years, particularly at elementary, with foundations and Lucy Cockins and Eureka Math and ST Math, which is really terrific for English learners, because, you know, sometimes it can be so language-rich. But the assumptions are that Medicaid, which we're very thankful for, that funds curriculum from the town side, based on services we provide, we get reimbursement and we've been using that. And that's really been much-needed relief. That's been very thankful, because we went almost a decade without being able to purchase new curriculum materials. And in the last few years, we've adopted and put in place some really tremendously rigorous curriculums across elementary, including middle school as well with science and the different new standards that have been in place. We also have challenges. So I talked a little bit about at the last meeting about being really proud. Like, we're known for award-winning music, arts, theater, robotics, athletics, et cetera. We've had some tremendous academic achievements. And we have improved MCAS. We have, you know, from a whole variety of measures, we've done really well. But we also have challenges. And that's why I wanted to identify these in the budget. We have challenges around meeting the needs of special education students, English learners, students who economically disadvantaged. And we also need to find ways to continue to challenge kids who excel academically. And those were what have been identified. You know, I have the good fortune. I visit over a hundred schools a year. I do a hundred school visits a year. I get to visit schools all the time. So I'm on the front line seeing what happens. And I'm proud to work with teachers that go the extra mile every day. But a lot of our success has been the result of the generosity and the donations of parents, PTOs, all those different things. But let's make no mistake about it. Our coaches, our teachers, our advisors, they go the extra mile every day for our kids with high class size, you know, in the Commonwealth, you know, not just per-pupil expenditures, but just about in all the categories of instruction, all the things, materials and supplies, you know, we're down in the bottom. That says we do produce these amazing results. And we have kids that go on and do amazing things. And it's a result and a reflection of the work folks do. So, what do I think this budget needs to attack? It's attacking class size. It's expanding opportunities. And it's providing support for students and staff that is desperately needed, in my opinion. You know, the high class size, I can't say it any better than a parent said it. I mean, when you have lower class size, you have the ability to provide much more attention. The expanded opportunities, that's for students who excel or, you know, we wanna challenge academically. It's for all students. And we've been really innovative in a lot of ways to do things that are cost-neutral. But oftentimes, we've had to do one thing at the expense of something else, you know, in order to meet a need. And then five years later, as someone who's worked in the district for twenty years, I say, someone says, well, what happened with this? Well, we, you know, we had a focus area because we had a problem and then we tackled it and we let this off to the side. So, and last but not least, I realize that it has to be sustainable. We can't do something that's going to, you know, not be something we can keep. It's not something we add for a year or two and have to take out. We need that consistency, this sustainability. I'm excited to continue to work with the town manager and the town side and the boards to have thoughtful discussion about, you know, our education, how our kids do. And, you know, pushing towards a budget that I think would be in line with our values, expectations and aspirations as a community. And that's why I've put together a multi-year plan. No frills. And it's no surprise, it has, it's staff. It's specialists. It's related arts. It's, you know, to accommodate class size mainly. And the operational needs are critical, because those operational needs and why I wanted to lay out the five years is we're running out of space in terms of trying to meet these needs. And a lot of the needs should drive the work that's gonna be done in the facilities master plan too. Because whoever said the middle school is packed, it's packed. I can attest firsthand with the child there. So it is packed and it's full. And when we look at facilities master plan too, it's about creating spaces for expanding. Initially, it was Franklin, Atkinson and Kittredge to do work there. And those are all still in the plan. And we're very fortunate working with the town manager to put the middle school in that as well, because we continue to apply for state reimbursement. We haven't got it. We've applied three times. There were only eleven projects approved this year. We'll continue to apply, but we'll examine every option possible as part of that committee so that we can create the best spaces, simply put, for teachers to teach and kids to learn. And that's why we've identified these needs. And I, you know, although it may be uncomfortable, not necessarily being in consensus for the first time in years, it was important to me to identify these needs, because that's my job as superintendent. I pass it to the school committee and now they have to adopt a budget. And I think we'll have really thoughtful conversations about how to best meet the needs of our kids going forward. So, Dr. Millie, if you wanna just slide through real quick. This was last year's slide for those who weren't here last week. We talked about positive initiatives and some of things going really well. The entry plan feedback was amazing. I mean, people, I know, I see a couple in here that I had met with. I did go to the library, the only one that wasn't well-attended. I think someone's here tonight that I had met in the library and I think it was just the two of us, and Kathleen Keenan. And the entry plan feedback, it was a transition year. And last year's slide, we called for a multi-year plan. And hopefully that this multi-year plan can drive those needs. As I mentioned before, this is teachers. This is teachers. It's no frills. And it's about decreasing class size, expanding those opportunities and providing the support for students and staff. And just remember, support for students and staff, all those years when we didn't have the funds for curriculum and thank God for Medicaid and the stabilization fund and special education, but we've never really provided the additional supports that we needed in terms of an elementary school with a second administrator. You know, big numbers, one administrator, and the principals working extensively, a big committee, to figure out what's the best way to do it. That's why we proposed the Atkinson gets the halftime principal next year. The following year, it would be Thompson. And the year after that would be Kittredge. So, Jim? Jim, do you wanna talk about the sixth grade? These were some of the questions from last week, so we'll try to tackle a few of those, if that's okay?
So, one of the questions was, what's the impact of adding another sixth-grade teacher to the middle school where one of the teams only has three teachers instead of four? It was listed as it would impact by two. I think they were rounding up, because the overall impact would be an average reduction of one and a half students. In reality, you're not gonna have one and a half student difference in a class. So going from fifteen classes to sixteen would mean, instead of fifteen classes of twenty-four, you're gonna have eight classes of twenty-three and eight classes of twenty-two. So, still a positive impact.
Can I just ask, so that's based off of the current fifth grade?
So the number, if the number of fifth grade is coming up?
Remains about the same.
Remains about the same. And we did adjust for what we traditionally see as a change from fifth grade to sixth grade.
Correct. And how, and I don't have the numbers here, but how big are like our third and our fourth grade? So is this like, is this hitting us, you know, with a...
So they're not bigger behind them either?
They're roughly the same.
Correct. Do you want me to do this one too?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Okay.
You're rolling, Jim. Keep going.
All right.
Multiple support program.
So, another question was, we have a multiple support program at the elementary level, but we have students moving up to the middle school. And I think the question was geared towards, can't the program just move with the students? But there are still students at the elementary level that need this multiple support program. So we need one at the elementary level. And we also need one for them to transition into the middle school. Otherwise, they may have to go out of district if we don't have the program at the middle school. The last bullet is the average tuition for an out-of-district placement is sixty-six thousand five hundred. But for these students, these students could be as high as two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for an out-of-district placement. So if we didn't have the program at the middle school and they had to go out of district, that would be that much more that we would have to add to the budget if we didn't have the program.
Jim, if I could intervene on that, we've often talked about the benefit of students staying in district. If we're talking about a multiple, the multiple supports need students, if we're talking about them having to travel farther in a bus, that's gonna be... If we're talking about them having to travel farther in a bus, that's going to be an impact on the quality of their day. If we're talking about students, you know, maintaining relationships within our community, you know, it's really important, the dollars and cents, but it's really important, the experience of a student learner.
Yes, thanks for pointing that out and we've pointed it out multiple, multiple times.
Absolutely.
That it's much better for the student to be in district, yes.
And the family.
And the family, yep. So, per pupil spending, Dr. Gilligan talked on those points, but I wanted to show the data. And this is the most recent data, I don't know which data people were looking at, but we have to every year submit to the state our spending for the previous year. So the most recent data was last year's FY19 information went to the state. We get audited to make sure that it's being submitted correctly. And these are the numbers when you break it out by school. And then what I used was the October 1, which is the official state number again, enrollment number for each school. And so you can see, and it tells a story. So last year, FY19, we opened up the Bradstreet. So it's not surprising that their number would be higher than other schools. You can see Atkinson at almost 77,50. Franklin, which has some of our district-wide programs, we can't afford to have a program at every school, so we put them at a school and the students from all over the district will go there. The high school with the high numbers, you would anticipate them being lower in the district is the same for the middle school. And Kittredge traditionally is higher for just the reason that Dr. Gilligan was talking about, which is small number, but with the same resources, a principal, nurse, two custodians, one for the night, one for the evening. So it tends to reflect higher. If you look at our schools, no school other than the district-wide programs has anything that other schools don't have. They all have the same things. And some of the factors that come into play besides what Dr. Gilligan talked about is if you have a senior staff at a school that, at the higher schedule, salary schedule, that's going to show a higher per student, per pupil spending amount, even though they might have the same number of teachers as another school. So a lot goes into it, including like Thompson, for instance. Last year was behind Atkinson in per pupil spending. This year they're ahead because we added that program, if you remember, the year before, to Thompson. So a lot goes into it, but these are the numbers and the request was made earlier to show the detail. And we'll put that online as well. So you'll be able to see exactly by account description what's at each school.
One thing that I did hear on the account descriptions, I think in the budget it has the numbers. Can we make sure that, I'm fine if the numbers are there, but the wording as well? Because I know a number of people kind of said like, these numbers mean nothing to us.
They're account numbers.
Right.
So there's not greater detail than that. So it's by account description and then with each account description you might have, and what they're going to see will be by school, that's probably the next level that we can break out.
But anybody looking at this?
Sorry, I'm on the wrong tab here. You know, 100.2.03.0020.2.22100.5.0502.542200.0001 means relatively nothing. So, I mean, I think if we could just, you know, say, was that crayons? I mean, I don't know what it is, but whatever it is, like...
Yeah, we can't do that detail, but like, that's why I do...
Well, just sum it up to something, is it salaries, is it like?
Yes, and that's why I roll it up in the one before that, you can see it by account description.
Okay.
All right. I might have missed a zero.
Okay. So what do the enrollment projections show us for student population? Fortunately for the past 10 years, because 10 years ago, we were pretty close to the max. We didn't have any more room. We were giving up libraries to make classrooms and music was on a cart and art on a cart. So fortunately for us, it's been fairly level for the past 10 years. Otherwise, we would have been in trouble. We are starting to see an increase in the birth rate and I just met the new town clerk and have been getting data from Joyce before her and now the new town clerk on birth rates and we're seeing an uptick in those. And we continue to have these large housing developments that everyone is aware of, being built. And so we're anticipating it's starting to go up. And so we strongly are advocating and you'll see it as part of Facilities Master Plan Phase 2, building capacity for two reasons. One, to continue to impact class size and bring it down and to account for the growth that is coming. Dr. Gilligan?
Someone said, well, at the last meeting, well, how do we do? You know, how do we do relative to other communities? And, you know, I think that when we look at how we do, we've had each school in this year to present and we've had the district overview of how we're doing on MCAS. And I think it's really important to note just a couple of things about MCAS is if those of you... Who is the teacher in the room? Any teachers here? If you recall, the state had made a move to go to a test called PARK. And for a couple of years, you had the opportunity to either participate in that pilot or stick with traditional MCAS. And we stuck with traditional MCAS in those years and it was 16, 2016, 17, right around there, 15. And the last couple of years, the state held harmless folks who took PARK. So it's a hard comparison, those couple of years, because less than 30% of the school districts in all of Massachusetts took the MCAS. They all took the Hold Harmless New Test, which eventually got dropped for another test called MCAS 2.0. Anyway, we've presented and overall, North Andover is making substantial progress towards meeting our targets. And when we talk about each individual school, Jim, if you can go on the next slide, I think it's important that, you know, most schools increase their progress towards meeting targets. Overall, the schools met math targets for the aggregate, but that means some didn't. Most schools also saw and had an increase in their lowest performing group or what's the lowest 25%? Every school has the lowest 25% as identified by the state. So it's a subgroup that they really look at as an indicator of how a school's doing. And most schools improved in their chronic absenteeism, which really plays a factor in accountability now. And last but not least, writing across the district continues to be an area that we need to improve. And it's been a couple of years with Lucy Cockens writing. It's been amazing, some of the work the kids have done. I think we had a meeting, was it last year or the year before at Atkinson? And Subayliss' class was absolutely amazing with the writing sample, examples they produced. And last but not least, our Latinx population continues to be an area that the district needs to support more effectively. So those were the trends as a district. James? It's frozen. Wait, it Googles back. Okay. Yeah, so people said, what are the challenges? What are the differences? You know, I said last time we met that in this community, we've done really well, but over this same period of time, you know, challenges have arisen. And it's in the sense of, look, our economically disadvantaged, our free and reduced lunch, which used to be the indicator for funding for Title I, et cetera. We've doubled as a district in the last decade. So as a district, we had 10.2% of our students getting free or reduced lunch in 2009, 10. And in 2019, 20, we have 22% of our district getting free or reduced lunch. So we've more than, you know, we've more than doubled. Secondly, what's the next one, Jim? Dr. Mealy? You know, folks said, well, how are you going to measure how you're doing? And, you know, in the strategic plan, as outlined, is the early indicators of success, the anticipated outcomes. How are we doing on the formative assessments? How are we doing on the dibbles? How are we doing on running records? And the teachers and the amazing work they do in collaboration at looking at student work. And last, then how are we doing on the MCAS? And it's just important that MCAS has changed. And, you know, I remember it was just a short year ago or two years ago, we talked about, we got report cards. All of you who had kids who take the MCAS, we got the, we got the report home and it said that 50% of the students weren't meeting expectations in grades three through eight in all of Massachusetts because they had changed the scoring, they had changed, moved the goalposts. They had argued about, for quite some time, about what that would look like and they changed the numbers, more importantly. So it was nothing like the old test. And at the same time, at the bottom, it said, leading the nation. Massachusetts has the best public schools in America and we have the best scores and that is proven on a lot of the standardized tests. So that's just important to know. The .5 Atkinson nurse, as we said, when we looked at, when we look at the budget, we work really closely with the principal, we take a really hard look with our leadership team. I'm lucky as a new superintendent and having the ability to, you know, get information from 1,136 people, including all the staffs as well, to tackle those problems. We know that there are certain things we need. And one of the requests was, we think that we have increasingly a host of kids coming to school with all sorts of issues, whether it could be diabetes at any of the schools or it could be kids who suffer from anxiety and some of those ailments manifest themselves in physical pain or things of that nature. You know, Atkinson is about third in the district, I said last time, between the high school and the middle school. Sergeant actually has more, but that's because they have that multiple supports program. And we believe that this will provide additional support for the Atkinson School and it is critical and it would help in a whole host of ways. And if anyone's ever heard Cheryl Barzac talk about the health program here in North Andover and the nursing program and the ability to keep kids in class during core academic times, keep them well, keep them safe and a holistic approach to providing what they need. I mean, our nurses are amazing in what they do.
My question is, how many, what are those visits for mostly?
You know, I could get the breakdown more, we actually have the breakdown. But some visits typically, if you recall, from last year, the nurse came in. It seemed like it was pretty evenly distributed. So some students have chronicle, need chronic medical attention and things like checking blood sugar, which by the way, now it's all done by an app, which is pretty amazing. To a check-in from a stomach ache, a, you know, a skinned knee on the playground, need an ice pack. Well, we've really, you know, snacks is one of the things, as you guys know, we've tackled in the PTO again. And some of the groups have, at the schools, been able to generate snacks in different areas of the hall. That was something years back where kids were coming down. I know when I was at Thompson as the principal for Saltine crackers because they needed something to eat.
So they primarily medical reasons?
Primarily medical, but it could be for a whole host of other things, including well-being, mental health. Social, emotional.
A couple of things I can add on our last Health Advisory Committee. One is that we're 400% increase in reporting of anxiety in third graders. And that's over the last couple of years that that increase has happened. And those certainly do result in visits to the nurse. And then it results in students getting information about how to self-care for anxiety, right? How to take deep breaths, how to, you know, visualize, you know, positive settings and all that stuff. But we had, I can't remember, but I believe it was something like a 20% increase in nurse visits this year alone. And at that time at the Health Advisory Committee, they had not done the analysis of what those addition, you know, what that increase was. Was it the same percentage of, you know, blood sugar and the same percentage of tummy aches? Or was it something else? So, you know, Cheryl may be working on that right now and I think that that would be good information to get back. But there was a, there was a sharp increase this year specifically.
So then I guess would it make sense to think about social, emotional support rather than strictly a nurse?
Well, as you know, I think we've added, you know, a social, emotional learning director in the district and looking at that as being a huge part of what we do. And you'll see in the plan, I do think there is a call for that type of support and we've added social worker, adjustment counselor in years out. And remember, we didn't get where we are overnight and we can't do everything at once and we have space constraints, but we can tackle it in a way I think that's responsible. And that's a, that's a huge area. It's been an increase that we've been working on extremely hard and I think making progress in terms of self-advocacy, self-regulation, different coping mechanisms, different components.
And I should clarify that the anxiety reporting was on a survey, it was not in nurse visits. It was on a parent survey.
And then the .5 FTE, so the halftime assistant principal at Atkinson. You know, there's been, we've been talking about this for a few years now and we had a group talking about, you know, a multi-year plan. Because as we've been talking about revisiting administration, if some of you recall in the strategic plan a couple of years ago, we looked at high school leadership. And if you remember, we had no more, we didn't have department heads. We had eliminated them at some point. And, you know, a school of almost 1,500 kids, you need content leaders of those departments. And high class sizes, so we tackled that. And then we said, we're going to tackle the middle school next and elementary leadership next, you know, so that we can best provide support for teachers, for outreach, all those things. Except we said, oh boy, we're hiring a new middle school principal, maybe we should wait till we get that person on board. You know, so over the course of the last year, we studied this pretty in-depth. Dr. Mealy did with the principals and the folks in the leadership team about what would be the best way to lay out something that's doable, sustainable. And, you know, Atkinson School, with just about the same amount of numbers over the last few years as Franklin, you know, needs a halftime assistant principal. Because we want principals to be instructional leaders, we want them out in the classroom, we want them engaging with kids and parents. And there's just a lot to do in the day when you're the only administrator for any of the schools in North Andover, the elementary schools. And we think this is really important to that, provide that support. And for teachers too.
And then specific to the question, it was, what would it look like? Because we've used a couple of different models. We started out with, somebody mentioned earlier, that a teacher would teach halftime and then be the administrator halftime. And then over the last couple of years, we've been able to use where one person is the halftime at two schools, two different schools. Given that, we would only be adding one halftime assistant principal. We wouldn't have that option of somebody splitting schools. So more than likely, it would either be, our two options would be a halftime teacher, halftime administrator, or somebody is available who can work just a halftime administrator position.
English learners, so, you know, our proposal is to have a full-time person. Someone asked if the EL teacher would be at Atkinson. And we currently only have one EL teacher for the entire district. We use a model where we have certified teachers that are paid as tutors. It's been like this for a very long time. And a few years ago, we had proposed to increase their pay from $28 an hour to 32, 34, 36. One of the challenges is we get some great people in that are certified in these roles. And guess what happens within a, you know, two months? If there's a job that's open with full benefits and teacher pay, they've gone. So I've been a long advocate of this, I think it's critical. You know, there's no mistake about it, our EL population has doubled in the last decade. I think from 1.1% to like 2.2% of our total population that receive services. And most importantly, you know, we know that the majority, almost, you know, a real, the biggest chunk are at Thompson and Atkinson. I think Thompson right now, I talked to Marion Mako, if anyone knows Marion, I think she said Thompson has one more right now, but that could change any day as things happen. So our plan would be to not only hire for, and I think the confusion, a few folks were confused, is Marion Mako's retiring this year and she's been awesome. But we will replace her job and be hiring an additional EL teacher on top of that. And I think having a model with all EL support as teachers moving forward, adding one the following year and then one the year after that is critical. We still have the tutors in place for next year. So this would actually be an increase in support. And we think that it's really important. I mean, people are really surprised at how many languages we have in this district and how many students we have from really diverse cultures and backgrounds, so. Last but not least, a few folks were asking about elementary class size. I mean, it's pretty remarkable where we've come. You know, of the recommended guidelines, it wasn't that long ago that over half of our classes were past those recommended guidelines. And it's down to 14%. And that really shows, I mean, the Bradstreet has made all the difference in the world. And backfilling, you know, five or six of those positions have allowed us to reduce class size and as we monitor the class size. But more importantly, it's allowed us to create spaces that are appropriate. You know, so that EL at one school's not in a hallway, it's in a classroom or special education. So that a school could get a library, so that a school could have a computer lab or a room to do that type of work. And just to show, the next slide, Jim. There's no kindergarten, actually, it wasn't the basement, Mr. Tursey, it was the, it was the ground level. Garden level. Garden level is how we described it to DESE. And then the class size, you know, so we've been down of, that's where we were in 2015, this is where we are today. But we've got work to do, we've got work to do. And we have pressure points. So there are different pressure points and one of the challenges... So there are different pressure points, and one of the challenges, and we work really hard to meet these needs, is when you have only classes at some schools of two per grade level, three at another and four at the most, and occasionally now and then you have an offshoot of a five, adding, you know, having two teachers makes the class really big, and adding three makes it really small. So we have to take into factors what are the needs of that particular class grade level, and I have to tell you that the principals have worked collaboratively together in a team way to approach what's best for North Endover pre-K through 12, where in a lot of districts, it's every person for themselves. And I'm so appreciative to have people that cooperate and do that so much. In terms of this reduced class size, I can tell you this, as assistant superintendent in charge of out-of-neighborhood placement, folks who might want to go to a different school, for a whole host of reasons, you know, daycare, jobs, we have also, over the years, it's been a while since we've capped out at 28, where someone's moved in and we've actually had to move them to another district, another school within the district. And last but not least, one of the things we've kept a really close eye on, and we do our best with, is at particular schools, any of the schools, if someone moves in and those class sizes are higher, and we can provide a bus and they have no ties to the community, we've moved a bunch of kids. So, for example, a big example would be Royal Crest is, you know, it's a neighborhood, it's designated for Atkinson, but we have a bus at Royal Crest that goes to the Sergeant School, and there's a lot of students who go to the Sergeant that live at the Royal Crest. So some of the other components of that is, we have buses in different parts of town that we have to provide that piece, and we try to keep those class sizes lower, and the more we can lower class size, it's really clear, the more attention and the better kids do, particularly in schools with challenges around economically disadvantaged, and our hope is to close that. And then I would just say in closing, we want to do what's best for our kids, we want to do it in a way that's sustainable, that's responsible, but we have needs to meet. I think we've done a pretty good job as a team identifying what these needs are. We'd like to lay this out over a period of time so that it's possible, and I think it's in line with our values as a community, with the understanding, we can't do it all at once because of the space constraints anyway. So let's have these needs drive those spaces, let's make a difference for kids in class size, let's expand offerings so kids can have the high-quality experiences and opportunities they deserve. And last but not least, let's provide the support for students and staff in addition to teachers and class size, but whether it's special education, EL, a specialist, music, art, PE, library media specialist that works. And I'm hopeful that there'll be some thoughtful conversation, and I'm glad to pass this recommended budget on to the board for their deliberation as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gilligan.
Very eloquent, very passionate. I know, I appreciate all the work that you and Jim and the whole team have put into this, so thank you very much. Other questions from the board? Committee? No? No? Okay. Good.
So a couple of quick things. One, I really appreciate the tracking of the questions and really kind of putting them out there. I think that that's a great needed step that's there, and I think we've done it in the past, but I really liked kind of seeing it in the PowerPoint format. I think some of the questions that we got from, from the public today, and thank you for saying them, I don't know if they all need to be in there, I think, you know, we may be able to do some of those in a blog, or not necessarily a blog, but, you know, just a document that's out there where somebody might be able to index it. So I think that that's great. One of the things, and I asked last time, but I don't know, there's three additional teachers that are slated for next year. Do you have any projections right now on where they would go?
So one of the things we've done is, we, we take a look at those class sizes and they change. There's move-ins and move-outs, there's, you know, different levels, and we typically make a decision about where those classes are going, where those teachers are going right around May, as we have folks that indicate they may be leaving the district. And we've used them typically to tackle the challenges where space is available to lower class size. So the other component is, of it is, some of you may not know, but we've also looked at other ways of tackling class size, and we'll have a presentation coming forward this year soon about the success Franklin's had with multi-age. They've done a multiple, a couple, a multiple-age class.
Did you read my notes?
Oh, I didn't read your notes. Well, the multiple age really made a difference in terms of reducing.
Can you explain that maybe for the audience who don't?
So multiple-age classroom is a classroom that we have a staff member really skilled that may have first and second graders. And they'll stay in first grade and second grade, but they're combined together, and the research really shows it's, it can be a really successful model, and our kids have done really well. And at the Franklin, it made a difference because particularly of the numbers, you know, from one grade to the next, the combination of both balanced it out really nicely and gave that flexibility. So Joe Clark's pretty pumped up about coming here to present that, and Franklin, as a result, has had some of the lowest numbers they've ever had in the history of Franklin. Those numbers have been traditionally, Franklin's been capped out in high, so we'll look at ways that we can do it internally that are cost-neutral, but we'll also look at add those teachers, and we'll tackle the class size, and sometimes that's also too based on the needs of that particular grade level.
More questions?
I was just going to say, you know, again, we talked last week, we're 316th in the state in terms of how we spend for our students, which is certainly not where we wanted to be, and we've dropped over the past couple of years as well. I was just kind of thinking, and I went back over some of my notes for this year in terms of what I've spent personally, and we talk a little bit about the contributions that, excuse me, families make in this town, whether it's through PTOs, whether it's through fundraisers, other things that we are providing for outside of the budget, right, to supplement what's going on and what's happening. This year, I'm over 2,400. So, you know, that's one, I happen to have three kids, so, you know, you could say, you know, whatever it is, per kid, 800. But, you know, the reality of it is, everyone in this town is contributing, you know, from a tax perspective, and then we are going above and beyond in many, many different ways to support the kids. And I think that that message needs to be really clear when we start to look at this. And I don't know if there's a good way to track this, but I think it's an important number to show, you know, how much money are the PTOs raising to supplement? How much are parents paying for buses to get their kids to schools once they hit seventh grade? How much are they paying at the high school to have their kids play sports, or band, or be in the drama program? All of those numbers are adding up, and they're adding up all over the place. And if we put that in to the actual budget, we probably would be, excuse me, closer to that median that's out there. I'm not saying we'd necessarily be, we certainly wouldn't be 316th, and I'm not saying everyone in the town needs to pay to get, you know, for buses and things like that, but incrementally, I mean, the amount of money that the families in this town are paying is just, it's way too high, and I would love to be able to present that.
Thirty bucks from that ad? Is it 35? Okay. We'll take that up at 2,400, so.
Andrew, the other thing is, I, the other one I left out last week was teachers, too, what they spend out of their own pockets. They go above and beyond, and I said it last week, I know some of you might not have seen last week, but just amazing. It's amazing, the, I mean, just the letter we got from Mr. Coakley in the N-AA recently about all the things they do, without fanfare, without expectation of publicity, and it's remarkable.
Ms. Mably, you had a few more questions, did Mr. McDevitt?
I appreciate a lot of the questions I had asked last week, and then Mr. McDevitt just asked one of the ones I had. One other thing I just wanted to put out there, just as an idea, is, so you have down this, you did a nice job, Ms. Marks, and I think Dr. Gilligan talked last time, about this registrar slash parent liaison person. And so I think it was actually, came to me from the tragedy that we had over this past weekend with the loss of the mom. I don't know if people are aware of how quickly the principals at the middle school and at the sergeant, the youth center, the booster club administrators, or whatever you want to call them, parents, all the PTOs have come together to try to support that, and Deanna Cruz, her department, and that was just added last year and a half, I think, by the town. It made me think that this registrar-parent liaison person maybe would be an interesting position to have related to the Deanna Cruz department, because, and maybe, and because the youth center is not, even though it feels like it's part of our school department, it's part of the town, and it seems like the partnership between the youth center, Deanna Cruz, the school department, if we had a registrar maybe at the youth center and funnel those kinds of things through there, it just might be a good way to provide new families to the town, a one-stop place to get support, resources, register their kids, learn about the town, have the kids meet people. Of course, it doesn't work for people who don't have kids, but I just was thinking if there was a way to, maybe instead of having that on the school budget, have that be something tied to that Deanna department, if that department's looking to expand its offerings. I know it certainly was timely with the Columbia Gas thing, so. That was just an idea I wanted to put out there to explore, and I think you guys covered the other questions I had.
Deanna Cruz is amazing.
We have the most amazing relationships with North Endover Police and the schools.
Right.
Amazing. The youth center, unbelievable. The Stevens Memorial Library and the curriculum program we're doing up at the high school, and the work that they do, and the summer program and bringing food there, amazing. And the ability of places even like Woodridge that allow us to have a tutoring program onsite where we'll put Chromebooks onsite, and just, they go above and beyond. It's a remarkable community, and if there's a, if there's an issue, make no mistake about it, I was talking about it with my wife last night, who works in Lawrence Public Schools. When there's a challenge in North Endover or people need to rally, it's unlike any other community. It's remarkable, the support they provide.
Thank you. Helen, you want to ask new questions?
I think I'm set. I mean, people have asked so many excellent questions. I really appreciate the public coming and putting forward their questions, and Andrew and Amy, and I did watch what was on last week, and a lot of good questions then, too, so I, I think I'm all set for right now. But as soon as you finish, I'll have a question.
I'm sure you will. And, okay, so like I promised, we have public comment again at the end of the meeting. If someone had another idea, just because you spoke before doesn't mean you can't speak again now if you'd like to, or anything that we've talked about since the public comment period that raised an idea or questions, I think Michael is making a lean in here. And for the record, I was chastised earlier for not.
So I just, I want to thank the superintendent for, for bringing this issue up this year. You know, I feel like this is something that is overdue as a discussion for the town to have, that we need to be having a real, open conversation, rather than one that is simply done behind the scenes about how much the schools, what rate the school should be funded at, and whether we are doing enough as a town to support our school system. I think our, our administration has done a fantastic job with the resources they've been given, they, I'm really thrilled and impressed with that, but at a certain point, less is simply less. And, and so I would like us, and I'm most encouraged by the superintendent's long-term plan, because I think a simple increase this year will not be enough to close the gap with where we want to be. I think this is something that has to be a long-term plan, and it's something that we have to really structurally build around. And so I, my, I implore the, the school committee here to really throw their weight behind this as a strategic plan. You know, the details are of course important in terms of where exactly the resources go and when, but, but I think as a, an overall goal, I think we, we need to increase our spending here. And to, you know, to echo some earlier points made both by board members and by, by community members, you know, we do lean a lot on, on donations from parents and things like that, and one of the prices that we pay is, is that our town is not evenly distributed economically. And the result of that is, is that the communities that need the most help are the ones that receive the least in that regard. And, and so the, the more that we structure ourselves to rely on those donations, the more we actually really kind of create a divide in our town as to who gets what kind of education. And so while, while like Mr. McDevitt, I certainly appreciate the, the efforts by parents to contribute to that, it, it's not, it's not a substitute for what we can do as a town, and what a government structure can do, so. But yeah, I, again, I just really want to thank you all for, for making this a, a real discussion this year, and, and I'm thrilled to see it, so thank you very much.
Okay. Any closing comments from the board before we adjourn? Anyone? Mr. McDevitt? Ms. Lynch? Ms. Mably? Ms. Picard?
I always have something.
I know you do.
I just really wanted to thank the high school for the alumni luncheon that they had just before Christmas. I did have an opportunity to go there, and in addition to the college students that came back, we had two active military, active-duty military youngsters who came back and really shared their stories. But that's such a really great event, and I just, the public should know, like, these kids come back, they're really excited to see each other, and almost no community has like a half-year reunion, right? A lot changes for kids between June and December. And if you don't have your first reunion until 10 years out, or, you know, 20 years out, or whatever, my father was the president of his class and didn't have a reunion until 50 years out, you might miss some things, so it's a really terrific event. And I just wanted to thank those, the students that came back and those staff members and parent volunteers that made that happen.
Thank you, Helen. At this town, take a motion to adjourn from somebody?
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion, Ms. McDevitt, second one, Ms. Lynch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all the papers say aye, aye. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.